I knew, I knew that he wasn't going to be satisfied until we sat down and talked to him. You know, I did, I knew that, and I guess they spent, they had that survey.
That was great.
And the property line seven feet onto that property, his property line. So he's going to get off that road.
I got it Ross, or one of those places.
Oh, I think it's great.
Thank you. I got it last summer.
It really, I'll tell you what, it looks really white.
It is. And I have, yeah, I got one of these things on underneath. So one of those, so that, I do have something on, you know, because I look like it.
Mr. Chairman, the board will be meeting in closed session for a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hay. Rick will be joining us later today when we're re-adjourned to closed session. But we will be meeting to discuss the following bargaining units. Lassen County Peace Officers Association, Lassen County General Employees Unit, United Public Employees in California, Lassen County Road Workers Association, Management Professional Association, Lassen County Peace Officers Association Supervisor Unit, Lassen County Peace Officers Association Management Unit, and Lassen County Deputy Sheriff's Association.
Will there be anybody who want to speak at public comment before we go to closed session? Okay, we will go to closed session.
He's going all the way.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that's why I don't like them.
I made sure our policy.
Good deal. You want to get back up there anyway?
Well, I gotta be careful I get it up.
What's his name, is Max's last name? That used to be along the public, probably Max and Molly.
I'm going to go.
I'm going to go.
Do you want to say?
I'm going back.
Yeah, because he's certified by the NRA. He can just write these cards. He's got a license right at his house. Yes, because his property backed up.
I know.
I know. I had an offer that my daughter, I couldn't refuse to go to Hawaii for five months and be a grandma. While she finishes her PhD there.
So sad.
And then he closed it on the size.
It's all sitting sideways.
He's got the little pallets set up.
Oh, just the right time.
The seven yards.
We've got to get out there practicing so far. I already got mine. To get a roof? Well, I'm going to have to start a roof. I think, I think it's around a hundred dollars. I don't know. They're thirty eight of them, they're just each one, and then you have to put the short apartment, and then. I don't know. Yeah, they have around twenty-five dollars there. I would have gone max, but twenty-five figured out the hundred. In the center, five dollars. Like, it is just convenience.
Special meeting in the board to provide general authority.
The United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, God has today through our meeting that we make profound judgment in all issues before us. God has foresight to know, to have no one but God for some argument. Okay, now, Mr. Biden.
Did you get a copy of this?
There's some extras too.
Now, Mr. Biden, please. Yes. Mr. Chairman, the board meeting closed session for conference with labor negotiator, and that closed session has been continued until later into the conclusion of the regular.
With that, we will go to agenda approval, addition, and evaluation. Any changes? Okay, take now. Okay, do we have a motion to give?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll sign it.
Any discussions? Any none on the table today? Both, you know, that's how. Okay, we'll go to public comment. First, I got Lily in.
Good morning. Nice to be here. My name's Lily Ann Arnold. I'm with the Big Valley Family Resource Center in Beaver. On May 12th, when I was asked to come and present to the board, Supervisor Alba was concerned about the fact that our center didn't want to move to the old primary school in Big Valley that's in Aiden. And he specifically stated that the reason for that was because of my staff and I not wanting to move. But, so I went back to the Family Resource Center, and you'll all have a copy of the, what I put out. I asked community members if they would be able to use our services if the center was in Aiden. And, so we've had it out since about the May 13th, basically, so a little over a month. We've had seventy-five people comment no. And we actually had started out just with a yes, no, and a comment area, but we had so many people initially ask us to put a place for them to sign it and put their name, that we, we changed the form so that they could sign and put their names. Five people did say yes. Out of the five, though, for instance, Sharon Hayes stated yes, that she would still use the services, but I would prefer remain in Beaver for better access of most of the people in the valley. So a number of the people who said yes also said, for instance, Donna De Loyola said, stated, it would be much more convenient if it stays in Beaver. So even though they said yes, they would use the services, they actually said no to the move. In presenting this, we just want to, our community wants to say that we like where the Resource Center is now. It's a place that people feel safe at, that they are used to. It's been there the entire time for thirteen years, since two thousand and three. In addition, there is funding to expand it and make it more useful. On top of that, it is a Lassen County building on Lassen County property, and we're paying Lassen County rent. So, and if this center was moved into Aiden, which is in Modoc County, we would no longer be on Lassen County property, we'd no longer be paying Lassen County rent, and there would no longer be services in Beaver, which is the largest community in northern Lassen County. So I think, I'm hoping that this kind of takes that point that, that we were being, that I was being accused, basically, of being the one who didn't want to move, and, and let you all know that this is actually community members who want to keep the center where it is, feel that the county has money to step up to the plate and add on a couple of offices so that there could be more things done there, and it would only improve a building that Lassen County already owns. So I know that there are some community members that have come along and want to speak. So, any questions?
Are these mostly elderly people that are utilizing these services?
No, we actually work with pregnant families through the elderly.
Any other question?
On the, did you go through and verify these, all these, I mean, I'm just looking here, you got little mechanics, these side this same petition for different places. I'm just curious, I don't know how many more would double sign or extra sign, I don't know, but.
I don't know, a few people did feel strongly about it, and when they come into the center, they would add to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other question? How many people from Modoc County use services because it's in the county line right there?
Yeah, well, we do get quite a few people from Modoc County because they come into the school to pick up their kids, and will stop and get services at the center. And then also, Lassen County Behavioral Health has a contract with Modoc County to provide behavioral health services there. So we do get some people out of Lookout and Aiden area coming over to get services through Behavioral Health.
Richard. Yeah, you're probably aware, we have this item agendaized on today's agenda, and I don't know if, you might be wrong. See, that's if people want to address the issue when we're talking about that issue rather than.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Lily.
You're welcome.
I have a George Ponce.
That's you, George. They're calling you.
What I would like to know is, why, why do you want to move it to Modoc County?
That, I don't know. I don't, but, I mean, they said the agenda is. They said the agenda is related around in the day, they full discussion on this issue. This could be better than doing it now, public comment. If that's okay, I don't care myself, I'm just. If you want to comment on now, public comment, we usually don't discuss back and forth issues. At the time of the agenda, I, we will be. Richard.
Attic.
Attic.
Let me introduce myself. I am hired as a driver for Lassen County, primarily doing the mental health issues out of the Resource Center. And I'll try to make it short, but I think that the location of the present One Stop or Resource Center is geographically located to best serve our clients. So most of our clients are between Little Valley, Beaver, that area, and we've also served some people in Modoc County, and even the Modoc County ones, it's a little bit closer because of the, the roads from Lookout kind of ends up at Beaver rather than in Aiden. So I think it's a, it's a logical place to be, and, and I won't go into it anymore. Because I think you mentioned it, we shouldn't have public comment on this because in general, I, I'm just, my, my, my main point is that geographically, it's located in a place which is more convenient for serving the clients that we serve in Lassen County, and also for the Modoc County ones.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment?
Excuse me?
I would ask if anybody else would wish to speak at public comment. See none, we'll move on to you. On the agenda I report by board members, Dr. Tom.
Well, at the beginning, this is the beginning of the summer, and I used to do my meetings with all the large employers and employers in my district. And I intend on starting that, I like Power, Sierra Cascade, there's three, FCI, Herlong, and CRM. And I intend on starting my informational meetings, and which way the county can assist, and what way we can increase revenue, to try to help our businesses grow.
Good. Jim.
I was in the PSA two, yesterday, burning, and. I just got concerned, we've had a couple of barns burned down last week, and then we had one burned down a month before. Maybe we need to have a, address this issue. There were some fires. I think the community's tired of what's going on in our community. It's not a city problem, it's not a county problem, it's a community problem. Richard, what do you, you want to like puppeteer or something?
I think what Supervisor Hemphill's referring to is the attraction of transient residents, and primarily that's causing grief for various landowners and business owners in the area. I guess I agree that it's, you know, it's, it's a community problem. I think the city of Suserville has kind of dealt with it by adopting a camping ordinance to keep those transients out of the city. But unfortunately, that just has the effect of pushing them into the county areas that are adjacent to the city. And, you know, along the Suserville, if you crawl through the willows, you can see the, you can see down there. And we can all listen to the stories about items being stolen, barns burned down. We can, we could agendaize and maybe item invite the city to, or perhaps I could meet with the city and bring back some options for the board as far as discussing.
Maybe like have a puppeteer like we did on the, on like on the pot issue, you know, people, let, let people decide how to fix the problem.
Well, I don't think a puppeteer, there's the agenda either.
Okay. Okay, now, Jim.
Yeah, I went to RCRC last week, it was still over in, down in the L C area. Anyway, they had some, some very good discussions, you know, of course, the state budget was just coming out, and of course, it's still kind of a limbo. They have made some changes, some of the changes they've made. There's going to be no funding for the home-to-school dollars at the time of the meeting, anyway. There's going to be no Medi-Cal reimbursement rates. You know, there's many changes between Monday and Wednesday when we got our meeting, and there's still a bunch more changes to come, a bunch of trailer bills that's going to be added on, etc. The good thing is, is the veteran service officers, the money's still in for that. As far as your SRA fees go, they're doing a good job of paying, because now they're going to offer five million dollars in grants to go back to the communities, rather than what were the rates we're going to give away back in grants. So anyway, that's their way of, way of fare, I guess, I don't know their opinion. The money's still going to be there for the fair, but the one thing about they're talking about guilt is, is that even though the money was appropriated and allocated out, the big three, which is the governor and the top senate guy and the top senate guy, they got together and they changed the wording in their, we're supposed to pay back from shall, they changed that to may. So even though it's appropriated, it probably still isn't going to get paid, so that's something else we got to deal with. So that's why there's further acquisitions coming forward from these state agencies, we must keep it in the diet because we're not going to get paid in. So they've changed the wording of the laws. Kind of the scuffle about going around, there's no clarification of the Cal Fire, they're looking at getting sixty million dollars from the cap and trade to buy easements in LA. SB sixteen, as far as, got some new bill coming in for transportation, which raises the sales tax prices for the gas and the diesel. It's like this, it's as well as this. Even though there is going to be coming up, I'm going to kind of look at it as a county, because for the small rural counties, that's probably the best deal we're going to get as far as getting funding for our roads, especially with the elimination of the old schools. Schools act, so we're going to be losing a bunch of funding, so that might be our only source to keep our, our roads in good shape. But that's something to talk about. And then, the other thing they're really talking about, that the state's really going to be hitting us on, is we're going to have to make sure that through Schmara, that our financial assurances are good. Because that's going to be coming back to bite us, so we're going formally have to make sure to prevent, because environmental laws and everything coming, they're really looking to fix this. You know, so many people. Of course, the groundwater issues, you know, the guy from the dairy, he said they've lost thirty feet in the last six weeks. And it's kind of interesting, because a lot of these other areas that are putting together their groundwater management basins, etc., the different organizations that are clamoring to be the lead agency. And then, of course, we have Big Valley in there that, where nobody can also step forward and rightfully so. In my humble opinion, that, that it's, so anyway, that's something we just need to continue working on. To make that. And then, of course, speaking of groundwater, you know, with the Grand Eagle Lake, again, it's getting farther and farther out there shaking up. So we have a full stop, this is the abaduct, to see if we can watch.
It's been dry before, I'm not in. Okay.
That's a lot. A couple things, Mr. Chairman, to kind of follow up on, on Mr. Alba. In addition to the pill funding being, after they made all the commitments and so forth, kind of following, been following the legislative sessions, I think, the trailer bills, they re-adopted the, they adopted a budget that they, to just meet the minimum constitutional requirement, and then they came back last Friday and adopted a new budget to replace the one they adopted on Monday in order to bring it up to speed. So they've been playing a lot of games down there. The trailer bills are still flowing through, they're acting on several of them, several of the means to be acted upon. But one of the pieces that I think we have, C S A reported in their legislative bulletin last Friday, the negative float counties, the six point nine million dollars that was put in to fund those that were basically short-changed with the funding formula that was out for Prop 13, and then later on, the E R A, and all the jiggering around they've done since then. And Lassen County is one of the remaining six counties that have been short-changed in the formula, would have benefited from that particular piece. Well, that is now, I think, being held up, and they most likely may not make it through to be adopted. So there's forces, and it's the same basic force that is messing with us on the pill money. And so, once again, we're all California, you know, these short chains because of their mechanizations down there. So I think we need to be tuning into that, and following that pretty closely. The other thing in today's paper, I have an op ed piece dealing with the Forest Service and their lack of getting the job done after promising to take care of the new Fedonia Trail system thing, going through the environmental review process. And even though we had, this board had the agreement with the former forest supervisor, and, you know, supposedly, there was supposed to be all this work done last year, this one, recently after Matt was here, the new, he's signed last night, and he's actually now officially appointed to be the new Eagle Lake District Ranger. And I really like him, I think he's got a good head on his shoulders, I think he's somebody who can do work. But the problem is, it doesn't matter if you have an agreement with the ranger or the forest supervisor, and you're moving forward. If the subordinate bureaucracy doesn't want to, you know, completely dispossess him, and that's what they've done after Jerry Bird left, and basically, did absolutely nothing. And I think one of the significant things that we need to communicate based on what Matt shared with Tony Shaw in that conversation is that in order to follow through on the things they agreed to, we need to have a recreation planner on staff who can handle a lot of the details. Staff can do a lot of work, but it needs to be coordinated. And they don't even fund, they don't even have that in their budget. They don't have a person who's a recreation planner. So even though they've been touting, you go on their website, and they count that they, you know, manage the forest for recreation access first, timber and grazing and mining and the other things, or secondary, recreation is first, they don't have any recreation staff. So it's all a, it's all a facade, and it's empty. And so I think that, you know, we, we need to, we're going to be talking about, either we're going to cut timber, have a timber-based economy, and with the facing out of the secure rural school funding in two years, we're going to be, they, they don't have timber production backed up to speed. We're going to be basically holding the bag with nothing, and that's, that's where we're headed. And of course, back in the early nineties, when Clinton and Gore took over, and they had the summit at Portland, and they basically announced, and it's been the policy of the Forest Service pretty much ever since, that, you know, timber is a side thing, recreation is the big thing. And if you change the name from the U.S. Forest Service to U.S. Recreation Service, would probably be more appropriate. But they don't even have a recreation planner. And so this recreation tourism economy that's supposed to be replacing this timber economy can only happen if they do that. But I can tell you right now, the subordinate bureaucracy at the national level, at the regional level, and even here at the local level, irrespective of what the supervisors and managers say, okay, is determined not to let that happen on Forest Service land. So travel management stuff, I think the coordinating council needs to really kind of focus on that. And that's where I think, you know, and the thing that's probably most aggravating, and this is something that I think, I was hoping the forest supervisor would have been here, he canceled his appearance last week, but they do have funding, there are places around the country that have, you know, as you're heading into Zion, the Dixie National Forest, has a huge recreation area, they manage the Red Rock Recreation Area. And they've got a visitor center that makes the Comby Monument at Lassen Park there, the new one at the south entrance, you know, look kind of small. I mean, it's big, and I pointed it out to Matt, and he said, yeah, he says Tahoe, and there's several places where they funnel a lot of money into for recreation purposes, but we're not on that list. So they, they come in and they tell us that we have to manage our resources based on a nationwide everybody's equal policy, where somebody in North Carolina, or Texas, or Utah, has the same standing as somebody in Suserville or Lassen County, determining what happens on the last. But yet, when it comes to the funding, they don't have that. So if you want to talk about equal protection under the law and discriminatory activity, you know, maybe what we ought to look at is putting together some sort of illegal action to sue them, saying that we want to be treated financially the same as they've treated these other areas. You're heading into the north rim of the Grand Canyon before you hit the park boundary. The Forest Service manages, you know, the kayak there on that north plateau. And they've got a huge visitor center there that you can stop at before you hit the last fifty, sixty miles into the north rim. So those folks get it, we don't. And I think it's time that we start holding their feet to the fire. So I think that's something, you know, just based on my investigations these last few weeks, I'm extremely disappointed at the fact that the Forest Service did absolutely nothing to do what they were supposed to. They promised us, Jerry came to the podium, you know, they wanted a whole full year to look at the flora and fauna, and make sure that all the critters are safe, and the trails are going to be not in archaeological sites and so forth. So we're, you know, we're going to lose the opportunity to develop from Fedonia, summit down to the Bizz Johnson Trail to the new south side, which is a big part of our, you know, trying to put together this recreation tourism economy. So you read about in the paper, and the last thing dealing with Eagle Lake level, Doc Bateson released some information late last week, Jeremy Crusoe had it on susanostuff.com. Sure there'll be articles in the paper and on the radio, but given, I guess it's dropped another four inches, and he's projecting that by August 5th, I think it is, the level of the lake will be lower than the lowest point that was recorded back in like nineteen thirty-five. So we're right on the cusp of being at that point with the lake. So I think that's kind of significant if we hit that.
It is significant.
Look on this.
I think I agree with you on the recreation part. They took our timber, so give us something back. Yeah, I agree.
We told them that, you know, BLM gets, they've got recreation planners, they're working with the community, and if, if they don't want to manage the land, give it to the forest.
Stan Baile is the recreation guy through BLM.
Yeah, they got, they got three people on their staff, Stan has been the most senior.
Didn't force her, is that, they used to have.
They used to have, but they, they, they basically refunded it. They don't have anybody in the position. And that was their excuse, or at least that was what Matt said was part of the reason why they didn't get the job, and they didn't have anybody there to do it currently. And it wasn't a priority.
It's because recreation doesn't end in all of it.
Yeah, it doesn't end in all of it. You're right.
All right, well, thank you, gives it up for, and we need to stay on for sure.
Well, hopefully, we'll have the forest supervisor in, and that'll be an item that he can address.
But you mean to address that on.
Yeah, exactly.
Richard will do that.
Well, Spetsk is going to be here last week.
They postponed because of the firing of forests over on the other side of the state, so.
Okay, let's move on to board decommission, Bureau of Health Advisory Board, that's my name.
How about you, Mr. Chairman?
Second up, watching your second. Any discussion on this appointment? And that would be who, Jim?
Ed Messon and Maureen Pearson.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
All papers say aye, aye. We'll go to the information consent calendar. I have a request, Mrs. Spencer, to hold G three and G eight in separate consideration with the board. And if you'd like to take off the separate consideration. Public have anything? Seeing none, we will ask for a motion to adjourn the consent agenda to accept G three and G eight. I'll make that motion. You guys say. Have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
All papers say aye, aye. G three, Mrs. Spencer?
Uh, I think Spencer, camino.com. On G three, you have a fund, uh, one hundred dash zero zero one one, but you don't have the account number. Um, does anybody know what account that five hundred dollars is coming out of? And, um, did one of the supervisors ask for this fund?
Ask for the fund?
Asked for the expenditure?
I think so, I believe so, yes.
Should be supervisor chat.
Yeah, I asked for it last week to be made as an out.
It doesn't. It doesn't mention.
Yeah, I see that, definitely.
That's why I asked. And also, while we're on G three, um, this is coming out of discretionary funds, um, which I believe is account three zero zero two eight zero zero, uh, special departmental expense? That's discretionary fund?
No.
No?
It's in the fourth budget. It's the third budget, not special departmental.
Well, uh, there is a line item.